All right, Ms. Tina, roll call.
Mayor Connie Ball, Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Here.
Alderman Jeff Fancher, Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda would be to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion been approved in the second, roll call. For all in favor say aye. All in favor say aye. Won't get hard to do this tonight, Willie. Lives should be pretty close. Okay, next we have on the agenda proclamation for the firefighters month and Alderman Hansel's gonna present the proclamation with the firefighter.
Chief Reagan Jr. staff is on the way over here, please. In keeping with the recognition of our city employees, the month of, excuse me, October is Fire Prevention Week. So from the office of the Mayor of Newport, Tennessee, the following proclamation has been issued. The United States Congress and President of the United States have designated October 7th and 8th of 2017 as National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Weekend. This honors firefighters who have sacrificed themselves to save others and whereas fighting fires is one of the most hazardous professions requiring physical strength, extensive training, courage, and selfless concern for the welfare of others and whereas firefighters can at any time and during any emergency be called on to sacrifice their lives in the performance of their life-saving duties and whereas firefighters play an essential role in the protection of lives and property in our community and whereas firefighters work with public safety officials and law enforcement officers to protect the integrity of crime scenes which is necessary to resolve arson cases and now therefore Mayor Connie Ball does proclaim October as Firefighters Month and calls upon all citizens of Newport, Tennessee to recognize the Newport Fire Department for their duties and service in our community. In witness whereof, Mayor Ball heretofore has set his hand and affixed the seal of the City of Newport, Tennessee on the 10th day of October 2017. Chief Reagan, congratulations.
Appreciate all y'all do for all of us every day. Appreciate the job and tell the rest of them too.
Mr. Hansel said to say a few words, so I'll say a few words. Thank you very much for letting us do this job. We do appreciate it and we're proud to be able to serve. Thanks a lot.
We've got a little recognition, city recognition for him.
Jeff, I did what you said. You said call, you'd call him up. First reason that I thought about them, they made a big contribution to our community over a period of years, it's been quite a while, that they've made a big impact on us, Jeff lost lives and a lot of people. And two of these have got special meanings made. I lived a former student in Cock County High School, Jeff was my manager. He was drum major in the band, Emily was. And Doc Fied got up here and not been in Camden, we know the people down there. She got up here a little earlier than you too. But I just wanted to tell them what a good job. I know what they do, a lot of things people don't know about, contribution to helping kids, sending kids to different things. Just wanted to know how much we appreciate it. I thank Dr. Foster, want to say something about the open house and a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you for the recognition tonight. We deeply appreciate that. On behalf of Dr. Kirk Steele and Dr. Emily Eisenhower, we, I would like to announce, and we would like to announce that on Monday, October 16th, from 10:00 in the morning until 7:00 in the evening, we will celebrate an open house of our new facility. We'll have a lot of things going on, things going on all the way between 10:00 and 7:00. We're gonna have three radio stations there. We'll have a ribbon cutting by the partnership at noon. We'll have a prayer of dedication and service a few minutes before that because we're very blessed to be in that building. And we also would like to announce that Coach Phil Fulmer will be in attendance at that also in the evening. I believe Dr. Steele from 5:00 to 7:00 signing autographs. So come up and we might have a bottle of water and you might get to meet Coach Fulmer and have an autograph. And we're mighty glad to be in that building. We're very blessed to be there. And the practice is over 60 years old, started by Dr. Nathan Ford, and we're very grateful for this, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad to have a picture, maybe, or... You two, I had Jeff first go around, we could get him in a picture, never come.
We just get better with age.
Okay, next on the agenda will be correspondence from Mr. James Fincham, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. First of all, I'd like to report that the audit has just been completed for this past fiscal year. They were here for about a week and a half and, of course, we don't have the results yet. I did have a preliminary meeting with them before they left. They said everything looks good from what they can see. Of course, last year, we had our first, to my knowledge, clear, clean audit and he said it looks like we're on track to do the same thing again this year, which was great news and a great tribute to the staff. One topic that I did put to him was about the possibility of doing a tax cut next year. As we have discussed, when we did the tax increase, we asked that the public bear with us for three years, that we got our buildings repaired, our equipment replaced, and tried to get on our feet financially and then we would look at trying to roll back the tax increase as much as possible. What I had sincerely hoped was that we could possibly do the .31 cents because that was what the county had to increase this year. If we could do the .31 cents for our residents, that way it'd kind of be a wash for them. They wouldn't be facing an increase, at least next year. But he said that would probably be a little bit of a stretch, but he felt pretty good about .25 cents at this point. So, I mean, anything can change. It's not a pledge we can make at this point, but everything is on track for us to keep our word on what we said and that was that we would definitely try to do a rollback after three years. And so we are still on track to do that. But I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on what the auditor had said and everything's looking good with audit and he feels like we're on the right track. And hopefully, they won't run into anything that they didn't see already and we'll have another clean audit. Update on the animal shelter. Yesterday, Vice Mayor Profit and I and some others met with representatives of the friends of the animal shelter, talked about a new contract for the animal shelter. It was very productive. The county attorney was there. He spoke on behalf of the county mayor about some concerns that she had. We spoke about concerns that we had. We felt like at the end of the meeting, everybody was in agreement, they're gonna go back and talk to their board and make the changes that we requested, end the contract and we'll go from there. But right now, everything looks really good, but we'll just have to see how progress is as we move along. But it was a very productive meeting. They have appointed a new treasurer. I know that was an issue that Mr. Fancher was real concerned about at the last meeting and it's why that we backed off of making any commitment at that time because it seemed to be that they were in a bit of disarray. But they have appointed a new treasurer, Marguerite Vassar. I think most of y'all would know her, Reed Vassar, the late Reed Vassar's daughter. And we felt really good about that appointment, that we got somebody, we feel like that they've appointed somebody that we can work with and that is very reputable and capable and I think that was a very positive step on their part. And we shared that with them yesterday, too. Finally, and I thought about just explaining all this myself, but I don't want to steal his thunder. Gary, you know, when Gary come along, Gary Carver, when I asked to fill that position, one of the things was that I felt we needed a, certainly we needed a city planner, but we also needed a grants coordinator. You know, everything that comes up, anytime we talk about building anything, buying anything, the first thing people say is, "Well, it looks like you could get a grant for that." And there certainly are not grants for everything that you want to do, but there are grants for certain things. And Gary has been very proactive in applying for those grants and we have had, he has finally reaped the benefit of his hard work. And I'm gonna let him tell you what all that has happened in the past month and I think that people will be pleasantly surprised about it. Gary?
Thank you. Last year, you guys approved funding for a stormwater study in downtown and we needed this to identify areas where there could be infrastructure improvements made to spur economic development and downtown revitalization. And then you agreed to budget the money for one phase of this project. At the same time, we applied for a grant to help offset taxpayer money for that, Community Development Block Grant. They don't give a lot of Community Development Block Grants for stormwater study, or for stormwater mitigation because it comes out of the same pool of money as safety. It takes creative writing to make them understand that stormwater is public safety. But we were indeed awarded Community Development Block Grant for a phase of this stormwater project. We budgeted that at $400,000. We received the grant. It's an 80/20, 20% local match. So our $80,000 is what we're gonna put in and we'll have federal money for $320,000 of that project, offsetting what would just be otherwise taxpayer money. In the same week, it was a weird week, guys.
Good week.
The same week, we received word that we had been awarded a grant from the Appalachian Regional Commission as well as the Wright Family Foundation, which is the family that owns the SI Group. They have a nonprofit where they, they only fund in a couple places, fortunately Cock County's one of them. These grants total $300,000 earmarked for the Tanner Building Project. And that, along with the $250,000 appropriation from the state already, puts us way past the million dollar mark to make the Tanner Project a reality. So after years and years of work from the Tanner Preservation Alliance, you're gonna see your work, your vision become a reality. The Tanner Building's gonna be reopened, thanks to this. And I, thank you. It was a lot of stuff and now we've got a million dollars in construction to begin, so that's gonna be another fun thing to do. But none of that's gonna be possible without the city council having the vision and foresight to give us the tools to be successful, believe in staff, all of us, not just me. Parks and Rec, police, fire, street department, animal control, everyone knows I forgot something, so sorry, but all of us, we feel very comfortable with you guys because you... People think that grants are just this magic funding bucket and there's good money out there, but none of it, none of it comes to you if you can't show them the local level that you're willing to work and do these projects on your own. That's how you get the grants. You put in the time. It takes years to do some of this, some of this stuff. And if we hadn't put years of work into it, we wouldn't have got a dime. So I think we're moving the city forward and I think we're really starting to pick up momentum. So none of that's possible without you guys, so I want to say thank you and thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you.
One thing, just to make clear too, and you know, Gary mentioned early on about the study and there's also the strategic plan. There were different things that had to be done before we could even apply for this money. And you all appropriated the funding for him to do his studies and get these things done. And that, along with the match that you have to put in on some of these grants, again, would not have been possible without the revenue to do it. And I just hope the public, I know that, you know, you all, I know you all languish over the tax increase all the time. I guess you talk to me more about that than anything overall. And we worked hard to get it where we can roll it back some, but if you all hadn't done the tax increase, if we didn't have the funds to do the studies that he had to have to apply for these grants, it's like my dad always said, "You gotta spend money to make money sometimes." And if we hadn't spent some money to do these things, we would not have qualified for these grants. And, you know, I spoke at Kiwanis today about a lot of this. In the past two years, we've taken in two and a quarter million dollars in grants and that's not chump change for a town this size. Now, not all of that has offset taxpayer money. Eight hundred and fifty thousand of that is for the home grant. Now, without the tax, without the grant money, we wouldn't have done that with local funding. But that will help. There's been a lot of families that have benefited by that, low income homeowners, and now we're gonna be able to help a whole lot more of them and that's through that grant. But the rest of these things that we have done with this grant money, it has offset taxpayer dollars. So if we hadn't got the grants, we'd had to pay for all this stuff out of local tax money. Now, at Kiwanis today, it was pointed out that it's all tax money, but grant money is tax money, but it comes, most of the time it's funneled from the federal government to the state and locally. So yeah, it is all tax money, but it's not local tax money. And so the staff's done a great job and a lot of the departments worked on their own grants and stuff, but like I say, in the last two years, two and a quarter million dollars, I think that's pretty impressive for what we've been able to accomplish. Like I say, for people, and I hear it a lot, and I know you guys do and I know I'm repeating myself, but I just hear it so much, "Well, this looks like you'd apply for a grant. Why don't you all apply for grants?" We do, like Gary said. Not every grant is worth applying for, even if you get it. It can cost, I mean, if you don't need it, if it's not a project that's a priority for you, you don't really, you weren't gonna do it, then you're taking on more expense that you didn't even plan on to start with because you gotta put a match with it. So not every grant is smart for you to apply for. And it just seems that so often, the things you need, there is no grant money out there for that. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that if you all hadn't done the things you've done, we wouldn't have had the money to get a lot of this grant money. So that's how that pays off in another way. So that's all I got, Mr. Vice Mayor. I think you were wanting to say something?
I'd say a few words, too. I was in the meeting yesterday with the animal shelter and for the first time, I've not been involved in all the meetings, but I was involved in that one yesterday, but that's for the first time that I felt like everybody came together and had a consensus on what was going on, what they were doing, what they could do and what they couldn't do. That's the first time and I believe everybody, so far, they still got a long way to go, that we can live with something, be satisfied with what we heard yesterday. And that's one of the things that's been holding us back. And one of the things, I appreciate you saying that, Gary, I appreciate all the work you've done on getting our grant. You've made a special effort to get this stuff and I really appreciate that. And Tina, appreciate what you do for keeping up the money she was earning. If you think she won't get fired, you go to a meeting with her sometime and think, "Right, you'll see, you'll see that other side." She knows what we stand and what we do and I appreciate that. If we do it, she lets it. If we don't, we can't. But anyway, I just appreciate that and thank you. Maybe people understand where their tax money's going. I think that they feel a little better if they know it's going to something that's being productive and helping and doing what we say we do and when the time comes, I hope we can start back with it. Appreciate y'all.
Well, I think Gary touched on it also. A lot of these grants are competitive in nature and the ones with the most money and the ones that can get the most things done, everybody wants those. So you gotta have some very creative writing in order to get those things sent our way. So it's a good thing that Gary's down for us and I appreciate it.
You made a good comment a while ago about, we got grants, sometime we couldn't afford, you can't afford to get every grant, just like what you said, it's happened to us before. Bobby, you got anything you'd like to say?
I'm just proud of Gary, the job he's done, he's been the benefits of our town. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Gary. Is that all you have?
Yes, sir.
Well, here comes the hardest part, I reckon, of the meeting. A lot of things, being an Alderman, you enjoy, you feel like you can help some people or something, but when you get into a situation when everybody that's applied for something, you can't have them all, you know. I have said where you ought to sit. I have been interviewed. Sometimes it worked out for me, sometimes it didn't work out for me. The only thing I'd always appreciated as an Alderman was to be, just not tell you something wasn't true. Don't tell me you're outside, you're gonna do something and come inside and do something else. That hurt me worse. Some of them told me, said, "I can't vote for you." I was obligated, reading or another, maybe next time. And I appreciate that a lot more than somebody telling me something and told me a lie. I didn't appreciate that. So anyway, I hope that all of us are friends. I hope we stay friends. And one of the things, I thought how tough this job was and how I dreaded this for tonight, but how many of you went to the street fest? How many of you saw them trying to judge old babies over and have old mamas over there? I said, "This might be a piece of cake after that." Saying your baby's not the prettiest and to get them all together, I don't know. But anyway, I felt better after I saw what happened over there. But on that being said, I would like to nominate Steve Smith for our Alderman.
A second.
Any of you can do that job, you remember that. But we can, we got a motion, second.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes. Thank you all. And remember, this is just like a 10-month basis. He might figure out that that's not what he's got in mind, so it gives you enough time to figure that out. You people, maybe, that wasn't chosen this time, don't give up, come back and try it again and run, do something, 'cause all of you can do the job. I really appreciate all of you.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Be sworn in and swear a lot of things, Steve, before it's over, we'll get up here.
Steve, if you'll come forward, I've got the pleasure of swearing in. I've got the oath of office, Steve. And if you'll repeat that for me, I've broken it down into three paragraphs and I'm gonna read it in each paragraph and if you'll repeat that paragraph. "I, Steve Smith, do solemnly swear or affirm that I possess all the qualifications prescribed to the office of the city alderman as prescribed by the city charter." If you'll repeat that, please.
"I, Steve Smith, do solemnly swear or affirm that I possess all the qualifications prescribed for the office of the city alderman as prescribed by the city charter."
"And that I will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and the state of Tennessee."
"And that I will support the Constitution and I will obey the laws of the United States and the state of Tennessee."
"And that I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the charter and ordinances of the city of Newport and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city alderman."
"That I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the charter and ordinances of the city of Newport and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city alderman."
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
You are officially a member of the city council.
That's your wife, you can get this seat.
Yes.
Got permission?
Thank you, Al.
I just want to get him, give him permission, he can come up here. No, no, you don't have to come, just give him permission. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is Tanner Preservation Alliance. I'd say y'all have a pretty good report.
Thank you, Vice, Mr. Vice Mayor. I don't know that we have that much to report. After Gary gave his report, what else can you say? I would like to say that I may veer a little bit off-topic tonight because, as Gary said, he had a great week this week and we had a great week last week. I would like to say that at some point, Mr. Vice Mayor had called me and informed me that we were over the top for the Tanner Building. Earlier in the week, I had the pleasure of signing quite a bit of paperwork for Newport Utilities to initiate our broadband initiative and get that started. So we were, it's been a great week so far and it's extended somewhat into this week because I was at the Eastham City Development District Board Meeting this morning and was informed that there's even more money available if we wish to apply for it toward the Tanner Building and toward any other project that we might deem necessary. So at this point, I'm just proud to say that the building is gonna be reopened, that we'll get a great deal of utility out of it. I think it's gonna be an asset to the community as a whole. But I would also be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the help that we received over the last, over the last six or seven years since I've been involved with the initiative. If you would, just please stand, the members of the committee, as I call your name, and I hope I don't miss anyone. Carlene Robinson.
Yes.
Carlene has really been the squeaky wheel, you might say, for this initiative. She got it started in the beginning. I think she kinda was a little bit abrasive at times and tried to get it rolling, but she stuck with it and she was very passionate about it. So Carlene, thank you for all your efforts. Who else is in the room? Sam Moscato and his lovely wife, who is not here, Kathy Moscato. Pardon me?
I was the wait waitress.
Oh, okay. But...
She's at the waiting center.
Yeah. She's already working the Tanner Building, I believe, but anyway, Ella Robinson. Sandra Nuttall, I don't believe is here, but these are, Marie Biddinger, I understand Marie is a little ill, and Jan Carpenter, who is also not here. But these are, this was a core group that kept it moving and kept going and worked faithfully in trying to get it done. I'd like to congratulate Gary. I will, I'll say one thing and just to give you the, some idea of how difficult this was, especially with the Wright Foundation and how good a job he did. We applied for that grant three, maybe four consecutive years and was turned down each time, but he took basically the same information that we, that we gave him, did his bit of little creative writing, I suppose, and he got it done. So congratulations, everyone, to everyone that worked toward this and to you, to you city council members who's had the foresight and the ability to see that that building could still be used as an asset. We like, thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the things, if I understand it correctly, with this amount of money, with what we were all afraid of, that it not been able to be finished, but now if I'm correct, the building should be about complete unless all this is over, is that correct?
With what we've already had, budgeted.
Right.
Plus the grant money, we may have to look at transferring a little money, what we talked about, now that we've gotten this grant for the stormwater, because we had budgeted that money to do the storm drainage, to address that. And now that we've got that grant, that will free up some dollars in the budget that we could transfer over to Tanner if needed to finish it out. So we may have to transfer 100, 125,000 from that to act to absolutely finish it out, because as Gary said, it's a million dollar project. And so, but the money within the budget will handle it. We will not have to take on additional tax dollars to finish it out.
We just didn't want to start it and then let it sit there another six or seven years and not finish it. Appreciate all the work you do. Mr. Glenn Ray, have you got anything to say about broadband or anything?
We moved the first cables today.
We moved the first cables today.
Well, that's good. Thank you. An old unfinished business, will, Mr. Hurst, you'll read that?
Yes. Mr. Vice Mayor, that is for consideration. It's ordinance number 2017-16, an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Newport from R-1 low-density residential to C-2 general commercial district zoning. This would be the second reading.
You need a roll call or just?
Yes, we need a roll call.
Okay, Ms. Tina, roll call?
Motion.
Thank you. We need a motion and a second.
I thought we all had that.
Make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Do you want a roll call?
Okay, that's what it said, you need to have roll call.
Okay. Okay. Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Okay, and new business, you can read that ordinance too, though.
Yes, sir. That is for the first reading of ordinance number 2017-17, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2017-2018.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call, Tina?
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is consideration of the Newport Fire Department, I think. Mr. Fincham's got a few words.
Well, Alderman Jeff Fincham asked me to talk about this in his absence. He also wanted me to explain that he is in Florida assisting hurricane victims, and this was something that he had put on the agenda, and he'd forgotten that he'd made this commitment at that time, and he said that he didn't want it put off. I asked if he wanted it put off, and he said, "No, just go ahead and deal with it." But about three months ago, before we filled the last firefighter position, Mr. Fincham asked me to do a study on the feasibility of adding either an additional part-time firefighter or a full-time firefighter. And the first thing I did was to go to Tina and make sure we had the money to do either one, and she said we did. The next thing I did was go to the fire hall and meet with Chief Regan and Assistant Chief Ramsey about the possibility of either one. They weren't too keen on the idea of a part-time person, but they said they could absolutely use an additional full-time person. Over the years, and I saw this firsthand, back six, seven years ago, they threw attrition as firemen and policemen were retiring with the new retirement plan that came along, they didn't fill three positions in the fire department. You have three shifts at the fire department, and so as they left, there were three positions that were not filled, and so that shortened each shift by one person. And so what Chief Regan, and of course, he's here tonight to answer any questions you may have about it, but what Chief Regan and Assistant Chief Ramsey said was that with the number of people that we have in the National Guard, with the number of vacations that they have, that there are times that they struggle to staff both fire stations, they have to have people come in and work overtime. Certainly, they would love to have those three positions back that they lost years ago, but anything would be a help. And so we really can't afford to refill the three positions, but if y'all wish, then we can, we can afford to create a new firefighter position that would serve as a fill-in, a floater, whatever you want to call it, that would work when people are on vacation, or when you're gone to the National Guard. Now, certainly, they couldn't, that one person wouldn't be enough to work every vacation, and for, if you've got three people gone to the guard, he can't fill three people's shoes. And so, but it would, but it would offset a lot of that at this point in time, so...
We're using the same procedure we've used the last three times. The next one, it was on the roll call, and the next one, that civil service, we're going by that procedure. So that being said, Patrick Chapman, I would like to nominate, he was next in line, I would like to nominate Patrick Chapman for the new fire position.
Say it.
I guess roll call.
The question, do we need to create the position first?
Well, we'll have to create that. That currently does not exist. All positions, it's called the allocation of positions, which I, that would probably, I mean, if you make it, as he said it, to fill a new position, I guess that would serve as, I mean, you know, the same purpose, but yes, technically, only the council can create a position.
Mr. Vice Mayor, why don't we create the position first, and then we can fill it?
However you want to do it. Maybe we need a position.
We need a motion to create the position, if that's the council.
I'll make a motion, we create the position.
Say it.
Okay, roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Now we can fill it, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay, we make a motion, we fill that position. Sit beside the lawyer, I don't know about this. We could make it simple if it was leave a slogan. Okay.
Okay. Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes. Thank you all. Out of bids and purchase expenses for Parks Recreation, I talked to Mr. Dockry some yesterday about the importance of some of this stuff, and he went over things with me, and got to tell me about some things, I've heard a little bit about it. Which one of you is going to speak?
We're talking tickets. Sorry, Coach, for the buck, so I was making sure that I get some extra tickets.
Okay, sorry.
The first one was the consideration of the bid for the resurfacing of Pet Milk Park in Filbert and Fifth. Is that, is that what y'all have?
Yes.
Is that what I've got, do each one be separate?
You said we'd have to do them separate, didn't you? Instead of doing all this at one time, he said do it separate.
Okay.
So of course, we advertise for bids, and of course, they're sent to our finance director, which those numbers are, if Tina can help me.
Okay. All right. From Playwright for Fifth and Filbert, they had 9,200. From Competition, Fifth and Filbert was 9,000. Playwright for Pet Milk was 7,500. Competition for Pet Milk was 8,600.
Well, there was a caveat of doing...
There was, from Competition, if you combined both at the same time, they would do it for 16,300.
16,300. So we would recommend to you to do with Competition on Fifth and Filbert and Pet Milk for 16,300, to accept that bid for the resurfacing of the basketball courts.
I need a motion that we accept that.
Make a motion to accept that.
Say it.
Roll call, motion been made, second. Roll call, Ms. Tina?
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes. Something I'd like to say before he says something else, but if you're out at night and you see a lot of what's going on with our recreation stuff, if you go to the parks, if you go to places, you'd be really amazed at how much work's done in our recreation department and what a big asset that is to our town to go hit there.
The second bid we'll turn over to Brandon is for the bunker field rack.
We are looking to replace a 1997 Cushman bunker field rake. They no longer make any parts to fit a Cushman. They are not in manufacture. We're having to modify parts to fix the Cushman we have now. The one we're looking at is a state contract Toro-Sampro 3040 with equivalent attachments to what we have on the Cushman now.
And that bid amount is?
I'm making a motion to accept the bid. If it lasts 20 more years, we won't be here, so...
It's got 1,200 hours on it right now, and the plan is to take the Cushman we have now is to leave it at grammar. That way, we're not taking it back and forth every time.
Okay. Roll call.
Who was the second? Thank you. Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is consideration of bid for a diesel tractor front-end loader for Parks Recreation.
I brought Mark up for this one here, because this is one that affects here more than anything, so...
Yeah, we've got a 97 Model John Deere. It's fixing to have to spend some money on it. This tractor came in good price, so I recommend we get it.
And what numbers are?
We had three bids submitted. Two of them were from Mead, and they do not qualify because they do not have the power takeoff that was requested on the bid. The only one that does qualify is Tri-County Power with the amount of $21,975.
Okay, so we're not trading in.
We have an opportunity to trade in, yes.
Yes.
And those numbers reflect there.
Well, with the trade-in, assuming if we were to get around 5,000, then we would be paying $16,975.
I make a motion that we accept that bid.
Say it.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes. Okay, next thing, a big consideration of a crew cab truck for Parks Recreation.
Okay, we, you know, we've been trying to replace our fleet as we've been going for the last couple of years, and this is another truck that will replace one of our old Dodge trucks. Of course, we have an F-150 that is, what model mark? 2001, the F-150? Is it, is it that young?
Probably is older than that.
It's older than that, then so that's what we're planning on replacing with this truck. We'll move in the little Ford Ranger into it, then we will put this one into, to the fleet also. And it's off a state contract through Murphysboro, and its numbers reflect...
It was submitted for bid, but there were no other options brought in, but he is correct, that is a state government contract.
I make a motion to approve that bid.
Say it.
Motion been made, second. Roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes. One of the things I'd like to say, too, is that a lot of people don't know why you need all this stuff now. When you've had equipment for 20 years or more, you can ask Mr. Hicks back there, Maurice, you can ask the fireman. When you've had equipment that long, it comes to place, you begin to spend a lot more trying to repair it and keep it up, and you do just fine. We've been through that a lot, and you've still got a piece of junk you can get through with. Appreciate all you're doing for...
Thank you, council.
Yes, sir. Okay, comments, citizens? We've got any citizens that'd like to make comments?
I would like for Fincham to get the vacant lot downtown, and I'd like the board to take in consideration to make it into a parking lot, not just pave it, but to landscape it, to make it look nice. Because as people drive through town, first impressions mean a lot. And if it's not landscaped, it's not fixed, you just pave it, you got, it is what it is. And I had mentioned the price to, I had talked to several different, one of you, I would be in consideration of reducing the price with the end writing that it would be landscaped and fixed to where it would be, look good for the city.
It's got a spring on it, instead of...
It does have a spring in the back. I had talked with Gary, and he had drew up a couple of things to make, maybe, actually I talked to Connie, to make a water effect or something, you know. I mean, it's, it would look good, and it definitely needs it. I've been letting people park on it for three years. I purchased it and was thinking about doing some retail shops down there, but downtown Newport's not growing until we get the vision that Gary and the rest of you all put in to try to make it look better. What you all did with the first phase with the walk was awesome, if you could have discontinued it. And I know y'all lost the funding because of one individual not giving in. Y'all are trying to do something with the city, and that's a plus. And thank you all for trying, because I've lived here all my life, and I mean, it's just now, people are trying to do something, get something going, and it needs it bad.
That's one, Mr. Kacker, that's one of the, if, I'm going to let you and Mr. Fincham, whenever you get time, work it out, you sit down with them. That's one of the most valuable pieces of land that the city could have, because, like you say, you've not got a lot downtown, but there's about seven or eight different places depending on that parking lot, have a place to get. Another day, after you blocked it off, nobody had a place, you know, they were trying to...
Exactly.
So I mean, you sort of see what importance it, but you work, you sit with them, and we'll consider...
When the state come through, they took what parallel parking was there, and you've only got the one other parking lot. And I mean, it's not like it's going to be a lot of expense to fix, because there's no demolition. It's level, you know, grade work and pavement, but I would like to see it landscaped, not just paved.
Right. We'd like them old timers to get your heart right and talk to Mr. Fincham, okay?
We'll do it.
Thank you, thank you.
I would just like to see if we can get somebody to straighten up the arrows that are painted on the road right in front of Walmart at the red lights. You've got one that's got an arrow getting you into one lane, and you go up to the next red light at Lowe's, and you've got an arrow going into the next lane, and you go through there every day, and you've got a lot of leaf lookers coming on that don't know the area, and you've got everybody going here and then here, and then it's going to bottleneck, and it would just be nice to get everybody on the same page. And I'd like to have somebody consider getting the arrows going in the right direction before somebody gets hurt bad, because there's constantly, there's people fighting, don't want anybody to, they don't want to give. Everybody wants to be the first one to go through and jump the gun, and it's just, it's getting really dangerous, and we've got leaf lookers coming on, and it would just be nice to have everybody on the same page.
That's a real good, valid point. I saw that yesterday.
Mr. Vice Mayor, as everyone's, I'm sure, well aware, the state just got through redesigning and rebuilding that intersection right above there that she's talking about where it used to change, and now it's, they're making it into, you know, a four-lane all the way up. We can check, that's all part of the state project that they're doing, that road improvement on 321 up through there. We could check with the state and see when they plan on trying to address that. They're probably going to do all the markings at one time when they get done, but we could check with them and see, would they be willing to go ahead and address that? But that's all part of their project right there.
I believe it just looked like some of ours has been left over from the last time. It's not even new, but they've not changed it, and it's going to cause an accident up there if you're not real careful. Real good, valid point. You check with it, Mr. Fincham. Have we got anybody else, citizens, comment? Okay, if not, I make a motion to meet and be adjourned.
Say it.
Second. All right. Thank you. Thank you.